Would you join me in a moment of prayer? Almighty God, we guide those receiving the ignubitus of the City Council of Laurel, Maryland. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the chairman, and for all the officers and members of this City Council and all in authority, granted to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties on behalf of all thy people. We commend the city, county, state, and nation to thy merciful care, and being guided by thy divine providence, we may dwell secure in thy peace. We especially commend your gracious care and keeping all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, our law enforcement community in fire and rescue. Defend them day by day with your heavenly grace, strengthen them in their trials and temptations, give them courage to face their peril and reset them, and grant it to each a century of your abiding presence wherever they may be. Remember those who lie upon a bed of affliction, come to those who mourn. Hear our prayer in the name of the Lord of life we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I call the roll, Ms. Rowe. Mr. Smalls?
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
President Querry?
Here.
Mayor Moll?
Agenda item number five is the approval of minutes for the fifteenth meeting of Monday, July 23rd, 2012. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ricks?
I move for approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Les.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Agenda item number six is the approval of minutes of the executive session on Wednesday, September 5th, 2012. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the minutes of the executive session on Wednesday, September 5th, 2012.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Les. Thank you, Mr. Ricks.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
We're going to go out of order at this time. Presentation by Mrs. Mills and Mayor Moll.
We are very pleased to advise you that we completed a most successful year of the Mayor's Summer Job Programs. This is perhaps the best group of young people we have had so far. This was the fourth year of this program. It's last year it won the Maryland Municipal League Achievement Award for the City of Laurel. What's interesting and important about this program, it is designed to give those young people the ages fourteen through sixteen an opportunity to find meaningful employment that's often very difficult for that age group. They have to go through real-life experience, they have to complete an application, they have to respond when notified for an interview, they have to compete for the position they've applied for through an interview process. This year, we had thirty-eight candidates, which was three for each position we had. We only had twelve positions, so the competition was very tough. Once they, we have them, we begin teaching them about municipal government, what it means to function in that particular department that they've been assigned to, what that department does with their first paycheck. Mr. Green conducts a financial management course for them, about an hour, hour and a half, where he explains the paycheck. The biggest disappointment you'll see when they realize, "I gotta pay taxes." That comes as quite a shock to them. But they got through that. They're given a tour of the city, which is their city, so they can have an idea of what the city does, where we do it, and gives them an opportunity to see how the position and the department they're working in fits into that department. It's been a very good program. The parents are excited about it and very supportive. They learn that they've got a dress for work, they have to be on time. They learn what happens if they're not on time. They learn responsibility for the assignments they are given, and that they don't get graded on the assignment, but they do get paid for it, so we expect a job to be done. And I can just say again, this is by far the best group we have had in the first four years of this program. What we have tonight, the parents are with them, we're going to be calling them up to make presentations to them of their certificate. First, we have Leal Bullock, who was in the office of the clerk. We'd ask after you, if you stand over towards the wall. Neil Gerhart, who worked in Public Works. Subira Hendrickson, who worked in the office of the mayor. Near and dear to my heart, Princess Jugbedaya, she was in our office, City Administrator's office. We're very proud of her. Mike Ryan Mofoor, who worked in the Community Planning and Business Services. Jevon Moore, who worked in the Police Department. Edward Ridley, who worked in Information Technology. India Said, who worked in Public Works. Nicole Salz, who worked in the cable studio where it was always very cold. Janelle Thomas, who worked in Budget and Personnel Services. Kayla Weatherly, who worked in Community Planning and Business Services. And Terrell Willis, who worked in the Department of Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
I also want to congratulate all of you all for the fine work and the hard work that you did here at city government. Want to thank the parents for being here, and it was a pleasure meeting all of you. And as I said, we've got plenty of volunteer spots open until you're looking for full-time employment, so congratulations. Thank you.
We have a court reporter here tonight, so I'm going to move on to agenda item number fourteen. However, the interns and their parents can leave, because I understand the interns have school tomorrow. Agenda item number fourteen is the fourth public hearing on Charter Resolution Number 155, Second 2012 Annexation. An annexation resolution to amend the Charter of the City of Laurel by the addition thereto of section number 248, entitled Second 2012 Annexation, providing for the annexation of all land included within part of Lot 2, described in a deed dated February 19th, 1969, by and between Harold L. Anderson and Cornelia E. Anderson, his wife, and the Presbyterian of Washington City, Incorporated. Recorded among the land records of Prince George's County, Maryland at Lieber, www.3693, folio 480, and in addition, part of Lot 3 and part of Lot 4, described in a deed dated February 15th, 1966, between Earl H. Long and Virginia E. Long, his wife and the trustees of the Presbyterian of Washington City, Inc., recorded among the land records of Prince George's County, Maryland, and Lieber, www.3281, folio 378, containing 4.3574 plus or minus total acres, the land to be placed in the R5 zone. I've read the title into the record for the fourth reading. Mr. Brendel?
Thank you, Madam President. Charter Resolution Number 155 was received on June 5th, 2012, for annexation of all the land included within part of Lot 2, described in a deed dated February 19th, 1969, by and between Harold L. Anderson and Cornelia F. Anderson, his wife, and the Presbyterian of Washington City, Incorporated, recorded among the land records of Prince George's County, Maryland, at Lieber 389, excuse me, 3693, folio 480, and in addition, part of Lot 3 and part of Lot 4, described in a deed dated February 15th, 1966, between Earl H. Long and Virginia E. Long, his wife and the trustees of the Presbyterian of Washington City, recorded in the land records of Prince George's County, at Lieber 3281, folio 378, containing 4.3574 acres, plus or minus, the land to be placed in the R5 zone. On June 7th, 2012, in accordance with Maryland state law, a letter was mailed to the Secretary of the Maryland Office of Planning, District One Prince George's County Council member, Chairman of the Prince George's County Planning Board, Clerk of the Prince George's County Council, and the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. Consistent with state law, the notice of public hearing of September the 10th, 2012, on Charter Resolution Number 155, Second 2012 Annexation, was advertised for two successive weeks in the Prince George's Sentinel on August the 16th and August the 23rd. On June 12th, 2012, in accordance with city ordinance, a notice was sent to all contiguous property owners and adjacent homeowners' associations advising them of Charter Resolution Number 155 and the public hearing dated the Mayor and City Council, and noted that the property should, would be placed in the city's R55 zone. A revised letter dated July 18th, 2012, stating that the property would be placed in the city's R5 zone, was sent to all contiguous property owners and adjacent homeowners' association on July 10th, 2012, the City of Laurel Planning Commission had a public hearing on Charter Resolution Number 155, Annexation Number 2-2012, recommending that the Charter Resolution Number 155 be approved and that the subject property be placed in the R5 zone. That concludes the reading of the file, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Brendel. I'll open the public hearing at 7:12. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:12. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Ricks?
I move for the adoption of Resolution 155.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Mayor Moll?
Madam President, I'd like to also recognize the fact that Mr. Taylor couldn't be here tonight. I'm going to thank him for his work with us, recognizing that he is in Hawaii doing missionary work.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Agenda item number seven is the report of the Mayor and City Council. Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee that's working on the community garden for the city, we've, we're coming close to making a decision on a site. We've had an opportunity to look at a few locations, and everything is, at this point, on track for the planning season, beginning in the spring of 2013. I've met with staff on a couple of occasions regarding the trap neuter and release review of both the county code and city code, animal control codes, and there is a meeting scheduled for the 13th on this particular item. I am very pleased to report that the Parks and Recs Department has installed an interpretive sign in Emancipation Park that commemorates, in part, the history of the park and the Grove Community. I also, I participated in the Maryland Municipal League's Board of Directors Strategic Planning Retreat this past weekend, and finally, I attended the Laurel Regional Hospital Foundation September Soiree at the University of Maryland on Saturday evening, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Mr. Ricks?
Yes, I'd like to state that I did attend the Emancipation Day Celebration in the Grove area. It was very well attended, and the food was absolutely scrumptious, as always, I might add, and it was a great day to be there, and with, the weather was beautiful. That's all my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Mr. Les?
Thank you, Madam President. We are back from our August recess, and that means it's back to school. Remember to slow down in neighborhoods and school zones. Not only is it wise for safety's sake, but speed cameras placed in most school zones throughout the county may catch you traveling faster than you think. We would like to congratulate Laurel Police Department's Corporal Brad DePietro, who was recognized last week by his peers for his contributions and expertise in the area of traffic safety at an awards lunch in Annapolis. Corporal DePietro is the first Laurel Police Department officer to receive this distinguished recognition. Last Wednesday, I had the pleasure, along with my colleagues, to attend the dedication of the new ambulance at the Laurel Rescue Squad. This ambulance was dedicated to Alex Ben, who devoted much of his life to serving his fellow citizens as a member of the squad. This honor is well deserved. As Mr. Smalls indicated this past weekend, we had the pleasure to attend the Laurel Hospital Foundation fundraising event. Fred called it a soiree, but it's actually their fundraising event. It was held Samuel Riggs Alumni Center at the University of Maryland. Good time was had by all, and as the support staff indicated, for the foundation, it was held in Prince George's County. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Les. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. We all attended the Emancipation Park Day, which was outstanding. Food was fantastic, the company and the weather was great, too. I also attended at the Amory, the senior dance, which was a lot of fun. There was a lot of dancing, and Gina over there is really doing a great job at entertaining the seniors. The other thing we attended was the Laurel Board of Trade Meeting, which was nice. That was at the Tampico Grill. Also attended the Faith Fellowship Community Day, that was on August the 25th, and that was well-attended from the community. A lot of fun, a lot of kids, a lot of activities. On August 22nd, I attended a meeting with, at the Bethany Community Church, which was well-attended. They are interested in doing, bringing, addressing the homelessness issue here in the city. So hopefully, they'll be coming to talk with us about that soon. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. In addition to the other meetings and celebrations that I attended with my colleagues, we also attended the groundbreaking of Laurel Town Center, which was quite momentous. I attended the COPS camp, and this year, I believe there was over eighty students that graduated on August 17th. On August 28th, I attended lunch with Steny Hoyer on the Women's Equality Day Celebration on August 28th. I say me and Steny Hoyer, there's 200 other people invited to attend lunch with us that day, too. In addition to that, Ben Carden joined our, came to our city and discussed businesses and business problems in this current economic situation on Main Street. That concludes my report. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple Get Well and condolences, condolences to Valerie Gregg, who's in my office, on the passing of her mother, as well as Dwayne Plumley, the passing of his father, who's in the Department of Public Works. Tim Brockington and his sister also passed away. Condolences to him, and also to Bruce Cole and Jean Bates, who are both in Public Works as well, and Bruce lost a brother and Jean lost a nephew, so our thoughts and prayers are with them. Also, Get Well wishes to Terry Thompson, who's our emergency services officer, also to Joan Anderson in our passport office, as well as Dave Kope, who's the fire marshal and will be out of service for a couple of weeks due to some knee replacement. I had the opportunity to attend the Laurel Board of Trade Annual Meeting. I want to thank the hard work that they continue to do of bringing business in and meeting with business people, and as well as working to bring business on Main Street in particular. The, on August the 7th, since we've been on break, I just want to thank our police department for the 29th Annual National Night Out. It was well-attended, very important event, and want to thank the community for coming out and supporting that as well. As you heard, the groundbreaking finally at the Town Center at Laurel took place. Very happy that things are moving along. We have some business tonight that they'll be coming before the council, and again, thank the council for their support in making this move forward. It's been a long time and long overdue. The COPS Camp graduation, again, just another great program that brings the kids together for a week-long event, and finding out what our police, police department does in the City of Laurel, and again, want to thank all the parents that participated in that as well. May also acknowledge and thank the Emancipation Day Celebration Committee and the St. Mark's United Methodist Church for a, another outstanding day on September the 1st, as well as on September the 8th, the city had their annual Doggie Dip Day down at the pool. As you know, the pool's closed, so before we drain all the water, all the dogs get the opportunity to take their shot in the swimming pool. So if you've never had the opportunity to see the Doggie Dip Day, I encourage you next year to take the opportunity, or take your dog as well. The First Responders and Military Appreciation Day, sponsored by the West Laurel Stallions, on Saturday, had several other events that day, and was running late. I think it went off, but by the time I got there, they were already playing football. So as Mr. Les said, I want to congratulate the family of Alex Ben, who is a longtime member of the Laurel Rescue Squad, and ran over 13,000 calls in his time with the Rescue Squad, which is a lot of calls. So thank them for the invitation as well. Couple, couple announcements. The Laurel Lions Club Annual Car Show will be here at City Hall in the parking lot outside, as well as the other lot next door, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. On September the 23rd is the Fourth Annual City of Laurel Dog Show, which will be held at McCullough Field from 12:00 until 4:00. And let me remind everyone, on September, the month of September is National Preparedness Month in the City of Laurel and statewide. The theme is "Resolve to Be Ready." And Marty, when's our event?
Twenty-seventh.
The 27th here at City, our partnership, at Partnership Hall at the Police Department, and what time?
Get together at 6:30.
6:30, and we'll be having our city event, and the public is welcome. Madam President, I have a couple appointments that I'd like to make, and Maxine Bardwell, did I get that right, Maxine? Maxine is here. I want to thank her for being here and for volunteering for the Park and Recs Citizens' Advisory Committee. Gwendolyn Boyd, I don't know if Gwendolyn here, for the Ethics Commission. Let me acknowledge, and we'll do this at a later date as well, thank Joe Fisher, who could not take the reappointment due to the efforts that he does with his schools and the community. So I want to thank Joe, and we'll again bring him here and recognize that. But I want to thank Gwendolyn for stepping up to the Ethics Commission, Kathy Grace for the Board of Trustees, the Retirement Plan, John Starnicky, Steinicky, the Board of Appeals, and Bobby McSiney for the Tree Board. And I think Bobby, is she still here? And Bobby's here as well. I'd ask for your confirmation, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor.
Close my report. Thank you.
Council, could I have a motion to confirm?
Madam President, move to confirm the mayoral appointments is right into the record.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
President Querry?
Agenda item number nine is the Mayor and City Council, the General Public Hearing. Each speaker signed up to speak. Is limited to two minutes for each item, and we will start tonight with, is it Orin Short?
Short.
Short, sorry about that. And as you come up, would you state your name and address for the record? Yeah.
Make sure that mic's on. I think we turned it off. So, all right, my name is Orin Short. I live at 1425 Oxford Drive in Laurel, Maryland. And again, I was just, I drove up today and I heard the comments about the NAACP and the situation that was happening with a young man at Laurel Station. I've only been a Laurel resident for six years, which is kind of young, because I heard some of the members were at least, some of the residents were at least thirty, thirty years here at Laurel. But since I've encountered the Laurel Police Department, it's been okay, but this is what I saw on the video was kind of rough and uncomfortable. What else I find kind of disheartening that I haven't, that no one has touched on, in the City of Laurel, the crime has gone up in the City of Laurel. And I guess I'm addressing members of the NAACP as well, as well as the council, as to how, how do we bridge the gap with the police officers taking for what you, taking the youth for criminals and who are not the criminals? I mean, this is a beautiful city, I enjoy living here. Like I said, I have no issues. You can look at me walking down the street, you couldn't tell I have a master's degree and I'm an educator in Howard County Public Schools, but there has to be a way that a city and the members of the city know each other, because again, what happened to that young man was unfortunate, but at the same time, again, it's disheartening when I wake, when I open up the Gazette, the Laurel Patch, to hear a robbery at the gas station, a robbery at the Popeyes, a burglary. It makes me feel uncomfortable, and I said, and I say to myself, "We need an aggressive police department." When I saw the Laurel Station, it says, "Okay, we need to calm that aggression down." So again, it seems like there's a disconnect somewhere between the citizens and who would regul, I don't want to say criminals, but those who are in our society as destroying a beautiful city. So again, I just want to make sure, I put this out there to the NAACP, as well as the citizen of, the council members of Laurel. How can we work together? How can we work together to know who are our residents and who are the criminals in our city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Next, I have signed up to speak.
Good evening, my name is Evelyn Speck. I live at 604th Street, Laurel, Maryland. I'm here tonight because I talked to Ms. Nicholas some time ago. She came to my house and saw my house and everything. I suggested to her that the state did not have any speed signs up telling us how much we're supposed to drive along Talbot Avenue. Well, last week, I looked, they had put signs up, but they put it up for 35 miles an hour. If you go look at the same type of area from US 1 to 7th Street on Gorman Avenue, it's 30 miles. Why am I getting on my street 35 when I have somebody in January jump the curb and hit my house, costing me over $10,000 to put my house back in order? So I'm asking this council to please get with the state and have that signs reduced down to 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Speck. Ms. Pollenby, are you? Kim, she's going to wait. Mr. DePietro?
Yeah, we're waiting for agenda item 16.
Sixteen.
Erica Scott. Address is 7337 Archshine Lane, Laurel, Maryland. On July 25th, 2012, I was on my way to work when I was pulled over on Route 198 by both Officer Curry and Officer Fennell. That's when Officer Curry then announced, "Ma'am, your license is suspended." I replied, "Sir, that can't be. My license is not suspended." I went to court, June 19th, 2012, paid my one ticket, and the case was dismissed. Dumbfounded about the situation, I finally had a chance to question Officer Curry, the sole reason of pulling me over. He told me I was driving directly behind you and noticed the license plate was expired 5/12. I was unclear of how he could have noticed my expired tags when there was a car between us from Cherry Lane to the intersection of Van Duzen. At this point, I'm still in the driver's seat, confused about how my driver's license has been suspended. That's when Officer Curry told me to put my car keys on the roof and my hands on the steering wheel. Officer Curry at this time opened my door, grabbed me by the wrist, and told me to exit my vehicle. I told him, "Sir, I'm not exiting my vehicle until you let go of my, my wrist." Now Officer Fennell, now Officer Curry then yanks me out the car, and I fall to my knees in shock. Now Officer Fennell makes his way around my car, closing the driver's side door. At this point, I'm still on the ground. Officer Curry now attempts to lift me off the ground, which made my dress fall slightly exposing my breasts. Once I felt my dress slip, I immediately covered my chest with my arms while Officer Curry and Fennell are trying to subdue me. We began to tussle as I tried to pull my dress up. Both officers were yelling at me to put my arms around my back. Feeling vulnerable, I did not comply. At this point, Officer Curry has applied his forearms to the I did not comply. At this point, Officer Curry has applied his forearms to the back of my neck, pressing my face against my car, squeezing my pressure points along my neck and along my shoulders. Once Curry did that, I was able to put my right arm behind my back and that's when he handcuffed my wrist, leaving my left arm to cover my bare chest. Since we were still tussling, that's when I fell and slipped. Officer Fennell then exclaimed, put your left arm behind your back before I mace you. Officer Fennell then gets on the ground and maces me in my face, eyes and ears. I was then able to put my dress up enough to ball up in a fetal position to try to protect myself. My face was burning so fiercely. Once Fennell was done, Curry then dropped to his knees and put his back, put his knees in my back, pressing my face against the pavement, which forced me to get out of fetal position and then that's when he handcuffed me. Later on, I was transferred to the Laurel Police Station. After that, Fennell, an anonymous officer sprayed my face with a spray bottle to get the mace out of my eyes. Through this whole entire process, I was never allowed to make not one single phone call through the two days I was locked up. Still to this day, I sustain injuries to my shoulder, jaw and back. I am now also have scarring on my right shoulder, scrapes through this whole nightmare.
Thank you for coming in.
And this will be the same dress I wore that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Bonita Scott? I need you to state your name and address.
My name is Bonita Scott. Uh, I reside at seven-three-three-seven Archshyne Lane, Laurel, Maryland. Mr. Mayor, Madam President, council members, on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, my daughter went missing. I called the Laurel Police Department on day one to begin the process of filing a missing persons report. On day two, I actually went to the station to complete the report. I was asked at the window to provide my daughter's name, which I did, and I sat for more than an hour waiting for an officer to come and take the report. The officer taking the report appeared to be a bit casual, uh, through the entire situation. There appeared to be no sense of urgency after I told him and two other officers that my daughter was missing. An hour or so after leaving the station, the officer called me to inform me that my daughter, excuse me, had in fact been at the very police station, the Laurel Station, where I had just sat for more than an hour. He proceeded to tell me that for the past two days, my daughter sat there after being stopped for a traffic violation and she was held after all ninety pounds of her resisted arrest. At least that's what they said. I know that sounds familiar because that was my daughter who was just here right before me speaking. Last year, the Violence Against Women's Act was passed. And if you think about it, what my daughter just talked about was probably one of the worst cases of violence against a woman that I've certainly heard. And unfortunately, it was at the hands of the Laurel Police Department. Mr. Mayor, Madam President, council members, I stand here today because there is violence against the citizens of, of Laurel at the hands of the Laurel Police Department. I stand here today as a concerned citizen of Laurel and as a concerned citizen. I stand here today as a mother for justice. Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council Members, I'd like to ask that we form a committee of citizens, police officers. I know there's one here today who's tasked with taking, uh, our names and addresses. So I'd like to ask that we form a committee, uh, to hopefully tackle this, this issue for a joint resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Adrian Russo. I live at one-zero-zero-one Fifth Street, Laurel, Maryland.
Good evening.
I too am here with concerns of what's been taking place, um, in the city of Laurel, not just recently, but over the years. Um, I've seen it personally as a youth. I've also seen it as an adult. Um, I mentor the kids in the community and try to make a difference in any way I can with them. But when I hear some of the stories that, that we actually saw in the video, it just reconfirmed some of the things and some of the concerns that I had. Um, I'm hoping that we get beyond this and that it's dealt with swiftly and properly so that it never, or we never have to come through and deal with this type of situation again. I know that in reality, it's, it's hard to do, but I think at some point, we have to come together and, and make it happen. Um, my biggest concern is when, when the kids are telling us about some of the events that take place when they deal with the police department and we only have to vision what they're telling us. In this particular case, the vision was videoed and we saw it firsthand. Um, I always try to tell the kids to be respectful to the police department and deal with them as a, as a ally rather than a foe, which is hard to do when they tell me some of the horrible stories that take place. Um, recently, the situation happened to my son, who was in the park on, uh, Old Sandy Spring, right down the street, not doing anything wrong, only to be encountered by two police officers who he said actually knew who he was because he and the two gentlemen that he was with play basketball at the Laurel High School. The police officer does some of the, uh, security at the game, so they know who he is and who the other two kids were. But they still insisted on having him put his hands on the hood of the car, patted him down, frisked him, asked him his name. He did not have a driver's license because he didn't drive. He didn't have his school ID because it wasn't school time. And he was upset and kind of disgruntled because he didn't understand why he was being treated this way. He, um, asked to call his father, which is myself, and they told him, shut your mouth and follow our instructions. Um, he's not the type of kid that is used to being manhandled and having people put their hands on him. So when he came home and reported to me what took place, the first thing I did was told him to stay in the house. I questioned him thoroughly and asked him, did you do anything to cause them to come at you in this manner? And he said, no. He was crying and upset, which made me upset. When I went down to the police department, I asked to speak to the officer in charge. I wanted to file a complaint, only to find out that there was no complaint or there was no charges or anything filed. They had no reason for pulling him over. There was no excuse, nothing. They just said that, from what I understand, that he, uh, wasn't a regular face in the neighborhood. So they were questioning that group as to why they were in the park. And mind you, a park is just that, a park. We are a city resident. We pay city taxes. And I think that all the kids in the community, whether they're in the community as a citizen of Laurel City or not, deserve to be treated with a little more respect. Um, I hope that you guys would investigate that situation and some of the others, just to get some clarity as to what we're doing here and what our mission statement is. As a mentor, I'm hoping that we can partnership up with the police department so that they can get to know these kids and maybe that will, uh, address this gentleman's situation as to finding out who's, uh, a criminal and who's a citizen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Matthews? Good evening.
Karen Matthews, six-eleven tenth Street, Laurel, Maryland, two-oh-seven-oh-seven. I've been, have been living in the city of Laurel for the last fifty years. I am very unhappy with the way the Laurel Police Department operates. It's a shame when you drive around Laurel and you see a traffic stop, one citizen in the car and eight or nine police officers surrounding the car. An African-American male can't even walk down the street without being stereotyped and harassed. Do we have police officers or do we have bullies, police bullies? You have several officers that were picked on when they were in school and now that they're, that, now that they have a badge and gun, they want to throw their weight around. The officers need to be trained properly. You all are wasting unnecessary money when you should be training these officers properly. The census of the community is that they have taken off their Klan uniforms and they have put on their guns and badges. Thank you.
Reverend Carl E. Bailey?
I'm Reverend Carl E. Bailey from Saint Mark United Methodist Church. I live five-oh-one Main Street. And I'm here because I was a policeman in North Philadelphia where every night is Friday. And my, my, what, my feeling is, is, uh, because police can do things and whenever they lose a case, which they lose, most of the time lose, the municipality, be it Laurel, be it Tacoma Park, be it Chevy Chase, pays this money. And I'm going to start pushing somebody for legislation so that when a policeman does something and the, and the area is sued, some of the money comes out of his pocket. Because I've heard fellow policemen, when I was a policeman in Philadelphia under Rizzo, say things like, wow, I've got a wife and kids. You had a wife and kids when you did wrong. Your wife and kids didn't come along after the fact. So I'm just going to push for legislation for, for, uh, some of the money that, that, that the policeman costs these cities come out of their pockets so that they can feel it too. And one of the things we did in Philadelphia, and I think they can do here too, we had areas that were mixed. Some of the areas like Frankfurt or, or, uh, up, up northeast were all white or all black. But the areas that had, that were mixed, Frank Rizzo had us integrate every car. He would come over the air. I saw a car with two white guys in a brake pad up. Saw a car with two black guys in a brake pad. Every car was integrated. That holds down the charges of, of racism because you got mixed cars. So the, the bad guys, be, be they black or white, kind of hold themselves in so, so that the other guy won't know what's going on with them. But my feeling is that I think that, uh, maybe they should just integrate some of these cars and, and, uh, start charging these policemen to pay some of the money out of their pockets that the cities have to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Matthews? Good evening.
Lawland Place, Laurel, Maryland. Good evening. I stand here this evening mad, angry, upset, and yes, disappointed at the behavior of the Laurel City Police Department. Tonight, you have heard more complaints against this department. Along with the video caught on TV, even as we speak today, there are even more. As a boy growing up in Laurel and being associated with this community fifty-one years, this is how I have always known Laurel Police Department to act. In other words, it's not at all a surprise by their behavior, meaning their lack of respect or disrespect in an African-American community. I, along with other members of the Laurel Grove community, have met with Mayor Moe, Chief McGlaughlin, on a number of times to discuss issues, concerns and complaints in the Laurel Grove community, which is your oldest African-American community. We just spoke about emancipation, which we have been celebrating since nineteen-ten. In each meeting, after meeting with Mayor Moe, Chief McGlaughlin, I leave with the thought, you know what? We're going, we're just going through the motions. I am always told that there are two sides to every story. So in other words, nothing ever gets done. Chief McGlaughlin has openly admitted to me that yes, he does have problem officers within his department. Upon departing every meeting with them, I would say, you know what? One day, I may not see it or I may see it, this police force, because of some of its disrespectful, cocky and unprofessional officers, will bring attention to this city. And now I can say, that day is here. Mayor Moe, City Council, Chief McGlaughlin, we, the concerned citizens, will no longer put up with this type of your behavior. We will not accept it or tolerate it anymore. It's time out for this time, this type of behavior. Thank you.
Mr. Ross, Bob Ross?
Good evening. My name is Bob Ross. I'm president of the Prince George's County NAACP, located ninety-two-oh-one Basil Court, Largo, Maryland. Um, you will get a copy of the press release and the letter that we have prepared to send to Department of Justice as well as the State Attorney, Doug Gansler, and Angela Osterbrook. And basically what, what has happened, when we came up in, um, but the incident of August fifth, which is under litigation and the court case is pending on that one, um, I had no idea that we would run into some of the issues as we talked to the residents here in Laurel, the city of Laurel. And we have been meeting every Wednesday for the last four weeks gathering concerns. Laurel first came on the radar in February of two thousand and one with the Prince George's County NAACP. Uh, an officer on the fourth call with a complaint, and I listened very carefully to that complaint. And unless they come in and file an official complaint with us, we normally just log, log it in. Then several other phone calls start to come in and we listen very carefully. And then after that, when this incident broke on, oh, no, I think April the fifteenth, an individual came in and actually filed the first complaint. It was a routine seatbelt viol- violation and escalated into more than what it should have. Because a passenger in a car, you have no reason to ask him for any of his identification. We are getting reports that citizens are being forced to disrobe in public for the sake of taking, particularly male, African-American males to take pictures of, of their tattoo, tattoos running fingers through their hair. We've even reported of individuals being maced after being arrested for no apparent reason and even threatened to have a bag put over their head. These are the concerns that are coming to us. And in the package, which we will provide you with, I forgot I left at the office, all those incidents that have come across our desk, which is clearly a violation of one's civil rights, one constitutional rights. As we talk to the ACLU in Laurel, uh, about this problem, they tend to agree. But without evidence or proof of what's going on, we have no other choice but to submit tomorrow the three packages that we have the night that we'll send on to the DOG to let them do, request an investigation. They may, um, or, or may not. Um, I am, I listen to the community and you have two problems and we got to break it down. You have a police issue that needs to be addressed. Then you have some other issues that sit, appear along, belong racial lines or a, a divide in the community where you don't seem, you want to get along. Uh, that issue, y'all guys have to address and figure out how to do it. But this community is living in fear of the police department. And a real good example was the Emancipation Day. You had eight police cars sitting at the end of the, the, end of the street. Those guys patrol up and down the street in a routine formation, putting on glasses, cameras and looking to see what was going on. One of the residents said to me, they're trying to incite us. I said, no, they, they can't be doing that. But I found that to be very unusual. And I attend a lot of community events and I have never seen that. And it was more of a friend. And I watched council come, spend very little time talking to the residents, you know, and I thought that was unusual. So on the surface, it looked one way, but in the community, everyone talks differently with an within the community, and things come out. You need to talk openly and honestly to resolve these issues that exist. Law has a bad reputation within the Prince George's County, as I travel through the county, the city of Law. It's stay out of law. Don't go to law. And I wonder why? And other police departments talks bad about Law, other communities talk bad about Law, and I couldn't figure out why. And it's an issue that we take dearly, because 78 years ago, the NAACP started in Beltsville, right down the road from you.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay, 78 years ago, that's where we started at. So we're going to stay with the citizen of Law to help come to a conclusion of the problem that exists here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Is it Devon Hebron speaking next?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
No, that's okay. It's Devon Hebron.
Devon.
Um, I'm not, uh, I live in Bowie, 11502 Bridger Court, Bowie, Maryland, 20720. But I was born and raised in Laurel. I've been in Laurel almost all my life. I actually now, I pastor church in Laurel. And I'm kind of bothered, not to say, and, and I, and I, I want to speak on behalf of people as well, because I don't think we're trying to say that all police officers are bad. But I, I just think that on every force, you have police officers that are opportunists. And a lot of times, our kids, they don't really know the law, and they don't know their civil rights. And a lot of times, when there are opportunists that are out there, you can take a situation, put a charge on me, and do things illegally to me, and, all in the, the sake of arresting me. And the reason why I say that, because I haven't always been on the right side of the law. And it's times I've been arrested, I've been beaten, okay, by police officers. At, at one time, I was in a community, and it was, you know, back in the early 80s, this was a predominantly white community. And I'm not going to mention the officer's name, because I know, I, I know the day very clearly. He stopped me in the community. He told me if he ever catch me in this community again, he going to stick his dog on me. So I asked him, I said, do you ever want for my arrest? Because he knew I was. He said, no. I said, well, I'm gone. And then he pulls the car in front of me, and then he opened the door, and he got the dog in the car. And then I, at that point, what I'm going to do? I had to stop. So now, I got to really cooperate with him, because I know that he's in a situation where he can take an opportunity to do what he wanted to do to me, and then charge me with whatever. So what we're saying, I'm, I'm going to be real quick, is that the ones that are doing these things, I think there, there should be investigations, because they, they, they represent the city in a sense. And, and you do have some bad seeds in that, in that, in that organization. And, and we're not saying that they're all bad, because there are some good officers, some very respectful officers. Because now the day they address me, Mr. Hebron, I address them. But what I'm saying is that I have a son, and he has my exact same name. And I, and I would be disturbed, highly disturbed. He's a 4.0 student in school, very dis, very respectful. And I would be disturbed if I had him in Laurel, and he went to play up on the field or playing football somewhere, and he's walking in his travels to get to me, or get to home, or get to his grandmother's house, and he's thrown down on the ground and arrested or just harassed for no reason at all. So what we're saying is, we're trying to bridge the gap, as the brother was saying earlier, between the police officers and the communities. Because again, we see a lot of things that go around outside of Law, but I think if we become more involved with the Law Grove community, I think it would be, it would be better.
Thank you, Mr. Hebron.
Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Hebron, we've, we've come a long way.
Yeah.
It's good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Uh, I've wanted, I have some comments I'll make, as soon as President allows, but I think you made a very valid point, and I think it's a good point to remember. We, we can't take a brush and brush everybody into the same category.
Absolutely.
On both sides of the fence. And I think the other piece that really made sense, and that is about making sure that the kids or the youth, the younger generation, understand their rights and understand what the police are doing, and police understand what they're doing. So it's a very good point.
Yes, sir.
So, um, good seeing you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a comment. First, let me take this opportunity to thank the community for coming out tonight, and I appreciate your comments. We don't take them lightly, and I think they'll all be followed up on. Some of the things that I heard here this evening are new. There's a couple of things that I've heard in the past, but we'll make sure that we follow up on all those. Mayor and City Council want to work with the community. We want to work with the NAACP, as we've done in the past, and that's important. I do not, I work very hard to make sure that it's one community, and I know a lot of people in that audience do as well. Having one community, we're a very diverse community, and we need to make sure that we're all working together for one. And if there are some bad apples out there, we're going to take care of those bad apples. I understand that. Everybody deals with this in all businesses. But again, what Mr. Hebron said, I thought really brought it home. The, the city has already started taking some steps. We've been working with the chief as well, on making sure that the investigations, when somebody makes a complaint, that they're followed up on. We've done some things. You can get a complaint form at the police department. You can get one at the Laurel Library. You can get one here at City Hall. You can call your council members and get those forms. And again, I know some people don't particularly want to go to the police department, that's understandable. But we have them at the Laurel Library, and we'll put them out wherever we can to make sure they're all followed up on. And again, it's the only way the chief and the city council and the mayor and the administration can make changes, productive changes, is for us to know about those things. I understand Mr. Matthews and I have met. I understand he's not happy or thinks that I sit on this information. This is not something I take lightly. We have done some things. Maybe it's not fast enough for some, I understand that. The other thing that I want to bring out is that, you know, the police department is running a lot more calls here. Where years ago, you know, they were running a couple hundred calls. Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, we're running over 5,000 calls for service a month now. So it, it is, it is a lot more intense out there, and I think it's important for us to work together. I think, um, this was, this is short, or Mr. Short, did I get that right? Is he still here? Thank, thank you for your comments. One of the things that the chief has worked on, and I want to encourage others, is to start chiefs' citizens advisory committees, where he's trying to reach out into the community so that we can, he can get feedback. We kept the politics out of it. As you heard tonight, I make appointments through committees, council approves. We kept that specifically away from us, so that the chief could have firsthand knowledge of what is going on out in the community and deal with these citizens advisory committees at his level and his command staff's level. It is important. There are still, Rich, a couple openings if people are interested. We're doing two, one in each of the wards, Ward 1 and Ward 2. I've talked to council. The other thing that we are trying to move forward on, we had a youth advisory committee. We would like to get that going again. The problem is, the way we wrote it, we have to go to the schools, and it kind of dies off at the end of the school years. But we are very interested in getting several of these committees up and running again. The youth advisory committee, Mr. Russo, we'd be more than happy to meet with you and others, if there's people that you may know at the youth level. It's important for us to hear that firsthand. That information comes back to the mayor and to the city council, as well as to the department heads. So that, that is, again, very important. I know Mr. Smalls, we talked a while back ago, is making some changes to it, so hopefully that'll come before the mayor and council within the next 30 days or less to try to get that up and running again and get more youth involved there as well. We want to work with the churches, and we have attempted to do that, and Ms. Scott, both. We are very, what you brought up tonight about putting a group together to, to work and, and to listen to the community, as well as, you know, feedback. It's got to be two ways. It can't be a, a one-way street here. So I thought that was positive. We look forward to putting that together. We have something in draft already, and there'll be a couple other changes that'll be coming forward. So, you know, again, I ask that you, again, you can call my office, you can call any of the council members, we're here to listen, it will take us some time. If there are some issues that you want to investigate, again, there, there are complaint forms, or you can contact the city administrator's office as well. It's important for us to work together, it's important for us, this won't be done overnight, but we're going to attempt to do it, and I think there's a lot of positive feedback that we got here this evening. So each of the other things that were brought up tonight, we will make sure that they're investigated, and, and that the chief reports back to the mayor and to the council on that. The issue with the, um, the Laurel Station, I've been very quiet about that, and that's probably a downfall on my part. I, I will just say that the investigation is moving forward. There are two investigations. One of those investigations, an internal investigation, which was started by the police chief before the news media even had a videotape. So I want to commend the chief for doing that. The second one is, a lot of people don't realize, there's a criminal investigation as well. That investigation is concluding, and I think tomorrow will be delivered to the state's attorney's office. They have a special unit that deals with these types of things. So that will be forwarded to them as well for review. But again, this is an officer I know, this is an officer that was highly decorated, saved someone's life a few years ago. He is at administrative leave, I guess we'll call it. He's not dealing with the general public, and I know there were some concerns about that. We briefed the, Mr. Ross and others regarding that. And as we move forward, I just ask that you wait until the investigations are over before anybody makes a decision. You and any criminal is allowed due process. The officer is allowed due process. So I ask that we all wait, see what happens, we again, work together, and we continue to move forward to be one community. That is very important to me. Then, thank you all for coming out tonight, and I'd be happy to meet with anybody in the coming weeks. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:02, and we're going to take a two-minute recess so people can shift about.
Thank you, Madam President. You should have a memo before you dated August 15th, 2012. The subject is "Extension of Open-Ended Consultant Contracts for Life-Safety Fire Protection Review." Since the inception of the life-safety review program, the city has worked with three engineering firms to provide life-safety plan review to the citizens and businesses of Laurel. The current consultant contracts with Cherokee Fire Protection, KPT Engineering, and Rolf Jensen and Associates for life-safety fire protection review process were approved by the mayor and city council originally on September 10th, 2010. All three contracts are now set to expire September 10th, 2012. At the advice of Robert Manzey, city solicitor, we have asked the fire-protection engineering firms to extend their existing contracts for two years and nine months. The nine months would be to extend the contract period so that it coincides with the city's fiscal budget year. The consultants have agreed to extend the terms and conditions of the contracts for a period of two years and nine months, as requested. If approved, the contracts will be set to expire on June 30th, 2014. We have received and archived agreement letters from each of the aforementioned fire-protection engineering firms. Based on recent renewed emphasis and on new and rehab construction in the city, the value of the service may well exceed $20,000. Therefore, it is necessary for the mayor and city council to award these contracts. Based on the above information, it is recommended that the mayor and city council authorize staff to execute open-ended contracts with the following firms for the requested time period under the current rates and conditions. Cherokee Fire Protection LLC, Middletown, Maryland, KPT Engineering Corporation, Huntington, Maryland, Rolf Jensen and Associates Incorporated of Laurel, Maryland.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Agenda item number 10 was discussed at our work session. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Les.
I move to that we adopt the recommendation to extend the open-ended consultant contracts for life-safety fire protection review.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Les. Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Consideration of a recommendation for electrical improvements in the storage facility at the park and recreation maintenance facility. Mr. Lotzke.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Mayor, and City Council. This was discussed at our most recent work session. This is for electrical improvements at the storage facility. The city of Laurel prepared specifications for electrical improvements to the new storage facility at 7705 Old Sandy Spring Road. This project will provide the electrical work necessary to provide electricity to the building, and that will also include the necessary electrical requirements for the canteen and the new emergency vehicle, which will be housed at that facility. We had three vendors to review the specifications, and they did a site visit with us, and we went over the project that we were entailing. The three proposals came in. First one was from Amber Enterprises out of Columbia, Maryland, at $24,725. RL Thompson Electrical out of Laurel, Maryland, for $24,749. Mackey Electrical Services out of Huntington, Maryland, for $29,500. Our funding source for this project is the FY 2013 to 2018 CIP under the Parks and Rec Maintenance Facility. As discussed, we noted that the difference between the second bid and the first bid was $24. RL Thompson being a local business and a city business. We made the recommendation, and the council looked at it very seriously, about awarding the bid to RL Thompson Electrical Contractors. There was discussion, and I would like to continue that recommendation that the mayor and city council approve the proposal supplied by RL Thompson Electrical Contractors for $24,749.
Thank you, Mr. Lotzke. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Ricks.
I agree that we should try and keep our business in the city of Laurel, and so therefore I concur with the recommendation that we award the contract to RL Thompson Electrical in the amount of $24,749.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, council. Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Agenda number 12 is a consideration of a bid recommendation for the purchase of ammunition. Chief McLaughlin.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Council members, mayor. The Laurel Police Department is a full-service law enforcement agency within the state of Maryland and a primary law enforcement responder within the city of Laurel. As such, the procurement of weapons and its accompanying supplies are paramount to our operation. Also, in keeping with the training standards and mandates by the Maryland Police Training Correction, I'm sorry, the Maryland Police and Correctional Training Commission, and the training requirements of the Laurel Police Department are necessary to have adequate supply of firearms and its accompanying supplies ammunition to meet the respective standards and objectives. Keeping with the present operational and training needs in this area, line items were prepared and submitted and approved in the council budget of fiscal year 13 to facilitate the purchase of varying types of ammunition. It is budgeted at $23,000. It is a request of the Laurel Police Department to approve the purchase of $22,950.64 through the gun shop in Vinestown, New Jersey, which currently carries a Maryland state contract for firearms and the ammunition. Again, it is a budgeted item, and it is budgeted for $23,000. We're requesting $22,950.64.
Thank you, chief. This, again, was discussed at the September 5th work session. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Les.
I move for the adoption of the bid recommendation for the purchase of ammunition as stated.
Thank you, Mr. Les. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Agenda item number 13 is a consideration of a recommendation for HVAC improvements at the Laurel Armory. Mr. Lotzke.
Yes, Madam President. Again, this was discussed at the most recent work session. This is for air conditioning for the third level or top level of the Laurel Armory Anderson Murphy Community Center. Currently, the top level does not have any air conditioning, and we are housing senior service office personnel. We have a game room for the kids and a meeting room that's used fairly extensively. The project will include installing ductwork off the existing AC unit that feeds the gymnasium. Currently, it has enough to provide air conditioning to this level also. These specifications have been approved by the Maryland Historic Trust, and that's necessary because we get state bond money to do this project. We had three vendors to review the specification and to attend a site visit. The proposals are as follows. American Mechanical Services out of Laurel, Maryland for $21,680. Maloney Air out of Laurel, Maryland for $22,248. And H&amp;C Heating and Cooling out of Laurel for $39,000. There is funding in the CIP for this, and we have matching funds from the state of Maryland, as I said. The recommendation at this time is that the city of Laurel, we've done business with each of these contractors. We currently have several service contracts with American Mechanical Services and at various city facilities. I recommend that the mayor and city council approve the proposal supplied by American Mechanical Services for $21,680.
Thank you, Mr. Lotzke. Again, this was discussed on September 5th at the work session. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Ricks.
I move that we adopt the recommendation of Mr. Lotzke and award the contract to American Mechanical Services in the amount of $21,680.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 15 is the introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1751, text amendment number 227, in ordinance to amend Chapter 20, land development subdivision, Article 1 zoning, Division 7, signs and advertising structures, and Division 14 design guidelines for the historic district commission of the city of Laurel code, providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:24. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 8:24. The second public hearing with possible action will be held on Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number 16 is the introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1752, R01, 2012, in ordinance to approve the conceptual revitalization overlay application for the town center at Laurel. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:26. Hello?
Hi.
State your name for the record.
Kim Potember.
Thank you.
I am the senior vice president and director of development for Greenberg Gibbons, the developers of Town Center at Laurel. We are just introducing for the concept overlay approval. I think most of you have seen the plans, but I brought the plans anyways. We're basically eliminating the, taking down everything that's on-site with the possible exception of the existing rear parking deck, and starting all over from scratch, we'll be building 400,000 square feet of retail. That includes the theater of about 50,000 square feet, and 435 residential units are planned as well. We'll be doing some off-site improvements, making the Cherry Lane entrance to the mall. It'll be a full-service intersection, so that will be greatly improved. There'll be an extra right turn lane on Route 1 as well onto Cherry Lane. On-site, it'll look great. We'll be building all-new buildings. There's a rendering there. There'll be a lot of brick and ephes, and it'll be open-air center, lots of outdoor space, landscaping, public gathering areas, outdoor dining, areas for, you know, small Friday evening concerts. It'll be a really nice town center. I have engineers here if you have any questions or anything today, but, like I said, this is just concept. We'll go to final after you guys get to look at this.
Thank you so much. Anything to add, Mr. DePietro?
Ma'am, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? If not, I'll close the public hearing at 8:27. Agenda item, and the second public hearing will be on Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number 17 is the introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1753, in ordinance to create a new Article 4 entitled "Dumpsters, Specialized Trash and Garbage Receptacles" in Chapter 7, entitled "Garbage, Trash, Weeds, Etc." Of the Code of the City of Laurel, in order to provide that all dumpsters and specialized trash and garbage receptacles must be within a wholly enclosed structure, allowing a period of time for compliance for existing dumpsters and/or specialized trash and garbage receptacles. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:28. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 8:28. This is the first reading. The second public hearing with possible action will be held on Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number 18 is the introduction in first public hearing on Resolution Number 7-12, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, approving an amendment to Resolution Number 14011, to enlarge the designation area described as a sustainable community by the state of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:29. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at 8:29. This will move forward with possible action for the second public hearing on Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number 19 is the introduction in first public hearing on Charter Resolution Number 158, a resolution to add a new Section 357 to the charter for the city of Laurel, entitled "Collective Bargaining," to provide for collective bargaining with certain police officers in the city police department. Number 158, a resolution to add a new Section 357 to the charter for the city of Laurel, entitled "Collective Bargaining," to provide for collective bargaining with certain police officers in the city police department. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:30. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 8:30. The second public hearing with possible action will be held on Monday, September 24th, at 7:00 PM. Agenda number 20 is the introduction in first public hearing on Charter Resolution Number 159, a resolution to amend the city of Laurel charter to revise the ward boundaries of the city in order to provide for substantially equal population in each of the city's two wards. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 8:31. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 8:31. This will move to a second public hearing with possible action on Monday, September 24th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. That concludes the business of the city council this evening, and I'll move to adjourn.